Call to the Order of Charter Township of Oxford, Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Wednesday, June 12th, 2024. Would you all please rise and pay respects to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Noting of the roll.
Noted, there is a form.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Hearing none. We'll move on to item five, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Nold.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item number six, Public Comment on Items Not on the Agenda. We open this up to the public right now for three minutes of speaking on items that are not on the agenda. Hello?
Hello? Hi, my name is Gail Cricks. I'm here to bring awareness to this board and the community of a situation that should alarm property owners and deserves to have more eyes on it. Some years ago, as part of the rerouting of Lakeville Road, Oxford Township and the Village of Oxford created a new municipal boundary line which completely bisected an existing property with a house and detached garage. They created two new lots out of the original one, leaving the house and garage straddling the newly created municipal boundary line and existing now in two jurisdictions. I own this property and I am being prevented from obtaining any authorizations to maintain or improve the structures on it. I am being deprived of basic property rights and due process. I cannot use my property, I cannot improve my property, and I have spent thousands of dollars attempting to resolve this situation. Oxford Township and the Village claim they lack jurisdiction to issue building permits due to the structures straddling the boundary and lot lines that they created. However, Oxford Township feels they do have the jurisdiction to issue a nuisance ticket for the condition of the structures, which I am legally not allowed to take any action to rectify and have been warned that if I attempt to do so without a permit, I will be stopped. Something is terribly wrong here. Issuing of a ticket without recourse is the first step by Oxford Township to attempt an unjust taking of property. Forcing me to tear down my house creates a non-conforming, worthless lot in the township. It also obscures the wrong the township did by creating this situation. But I am powerless to resolve. Imagine the ramifications and the legal precedents this sets. On May 11th last year, the township and the village finally agreed that if I sought dimensional variances from multi municipalities, I could repair or possibly build new homes on the property. I sought and received a dimensional variance from the Village of Oxford. Oxford Township then reneged on the deal. Please, I encourage you to read the opinion report from McKenna Incorporated, the planning consultant hired by the village. I have copies here. I stand here, ready, willing, able, and eager to restore my property at 501 Lakeville Road. I would like to express my empathy to the Oxford community who may be thinking that I'm a bad property owner. I want to state for the public record that the condition of the property is not a choice. It is a condition put upon me that I cannot resolve without jurisdiction.
Gail, your three minutes is up. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Why is Oxford Township spending so much time?
Is there anybody else in the community that'd like to have public comment?
Why? Why are you spending so much time?
Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven. Gail, you're out of order. Please sit down. Thank you. Anybody else in the public like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, Board of Trustees Comments. We'll start with Trustee Charles.
If it's all right and if anyone's interested.
Gail, please sit down. You're out of order. Thank you.
And I would encourage you to read them.
Trustee Charles?
A couple of things. One, kind of a sad note, for those people that know or knew Glenn Pape, our previous executive director for the Oxford Downtown Development Authority. Glenn passed away last week of a heart attack. So just to let everyone know that publicly for those who aren't familiar or were not familiar with that. Less important than that, of course, would be just to let people know we are working on the website. We'll have a report and recommendations for the next board meeting. We've been working on that and we appreciate the feedback from everybody at the township and we've read through the recommendations and we'll act accordingly, but that's coming up next board meeting. One other thing, just to remind folks, and I'll let Catherine talk about the concerts in the park, but I will say it's a reference to Oxford Addison Youth Assistance. We will have booths at the farmer's market and at the concerts in the park Thursday nights. So that's it.
Thank you. Clerk Wright?
Just that we are getting ramped up to begin for the August election, so it's going to be getting very busy in the clerk's department. So we're just waiting for the ballots to come in.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Supervisor, I believe what was just brought up, I think that's ongoing litigation, correct?
Yes, it is.
So we probably shouldn't comment on that regardless.
Correct.
Okay, it's all ahead.
Thank you. Trustee Nold? No comment. Thank you. Trustee Payne?
Nothing at this time.
Trustee Colvin?
Trustee Charles mentioned it, concerts in the park starting up on Thursdays. On Tuesdays, there's line dancing lessons in Washington Square if anybody wants to learn some line dancing. I was not there the other day, but it looked like people had a lot of fun. So enjoy your downtime.
Thank you. I have no comments at this time. Item number eight, Resolution and Recognition of Bob Gerds. Call Tim London up. What we're going to do is pass a resolution for Bob Gerds, who worked as an HVAC inspector for 33 years in Oxford Township, performing over 11,600 inspections. Bob has since retired. Go ahead, Tim. Thank you.
So whereas Bob Gerds basically served Charter Township, the Oxford is a plumbing and HPA inspector from 1991 to 2024. And whereas Mr. Gerds was widely respected as a consummate professional disconsolate professionalism, considered considerable expertise and friendly manner. And whereas Mr. Gerds tremendous knowledge and meticulous attention and detail helped to protect the public health and safety and ensuring township homes and buildings were up to code. And whereas Mr. Gerds' work was critical to guaranteeing that plumbing and HPA systems were installed correctly and operated efficiently. And whereas Mr. Gerds performed thousands of inspections that enhanced the quality for everyone who lives, works, plays in the township between 2001, 2024. He conducted 11,611 inspections. And whereas Mr. Gerds always acted with integrity, never shirked at his duties, treated everyone with dignity, and was valued and dedicated member of the township too. Now therefore, we have resolved that Charter Township Oxford Board of Trustees wish to express its heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to Inspector Gerds for everything he did to make our community a better place. Charter Township, Inspector Gerds, in his hearing hopes he enjoys his well-deserved retirement. He will be sorely missed. We wish him nothing but the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, if you'd come on up, we'll take a short recess, get a picture of you and your wife and Tim, and thank you for your service.
Let's pick the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution honoring Rob Gerds as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Nold. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Thank you, Bob. We could take about a five-minute recess, please. Like to get your meeting back to order, please. Thank you, Mr. Gerds, and thank you, Mrs. Gerds. Okay, item nine, Purpose.
I'll make a motion, meet an open session, entertain a motion, take a roll call vote, two-thirds majority needed, regarding calling closed session for the following purpose. Discussion of written legal opinion regarding the following. One, potential litigation pursuant to MCL 15.268H, subsection H, and MCL 15.243, subsection G, and potential purchase of property pursuant to MCL 15.2681, subsection 1, subsection D, and MCL 15.268, subsection 1, subsection 8, to the Township Board, Attorney Ellis, Recording Secretary Smith and McCullough. Any other folks?
Ah, no.
That's my motion.
I'll second. Oh. Okay. Go ahead. Roll call. I have a motion, wait, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Nold. Thank you. Sorry. A roll call, please.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. So I would ask everybody that will call you back in after the closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda. Make item 12A, move everything else down. Will be consideration for the rescission. The authors H for litigation pertain to the library board candidates.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Nold. Roll call.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item 10, Fire Department. Nothing to say, Chief? Okay. Sharp engineering report. In your, board members in your packet was a sharp engineering report outlining all the projects going on in the township. I'm pretty knowledgeable of all of them. If you have a concern, we gave engineer Sharp the night off. So if you have any questions, please ask them. I'll try to address them. Hearing none. Item 12A, The Litigation.
Make a motion to rescind the prior motion authorizing litigation against the county with regard to striking of the library board candidates from the ballot and authorize the township attorney draft a letter to the county setting forth the township's concerns for the handling of election issues.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, I have a second by Trustee Nold. Questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item 12B, Single Hauler Recommendation. Trustee Nold.
Good evening, Board. We went out under your permission to get a single waste hauler. RFPs in. The three responses were GFL, environmental, priority waste, and waste management. And we're here tonight for two different, two separate authorizations from the board. One is to approve priority waste as a designated hauler. So the first motion I'd like to make tonight, I move to authorize a single hauler subcommittee to draft proposed ballot language for a placement on the general election ballot for consideration by the Board of Trustees on July 10th, 2024 Agenda, which shall allow voters to determine whether to have a single waste hauler service for all of Oxford.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Nold and a second by Trustee Payne. Questions? Treasurer Ferrari?
It's assuming this does not impact the village, correct?
Correct.
The village is not involved with this, correct?
You said all of Oxford. That's all saying the village.
All of Oxford Township.
Okay.
The village is within the, I understand.
Vote it down.
We do?
We got to vote it down.
Why?
Motion was made and seconded, correct?
He said all of Oxford, instead of Oxford Township.
She should vote it down.
We have to vote it down?
Got to vote it down. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
No.
Trustee Nold?
No.
Trustee Payne?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Clerk Wright, no. Trustee Charles?
No.
Supervisor Curtis?
No.
I tried that motion again. I'm working here.
I move to authorize the single waste hauler subcommittee to draft a proposed ballot language for placement on the general election ballot for consideration by the Board of Trustees on July 10th, 2024 Agenda, which would allow voters to determine whether to have a single waste hauler service for all of Oxford Township excluding the village.
I make that shall, not would. You said would allow, shall allow.
Which shall allow voters to determine whether to have a single waste hauler service for all of Oxford Township excluding the village of Oxford.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Nold, a second by Trustee Payne. I'll entertain questions. Seeing none. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
The board, I have a second motion to bring forward tonight. I move to accept the response, excuse me. I move to accept the response to request for proposal submitted by a priority waste to be Oxford Township's single hauler conditioned upon the majority of the township voters voting in favor of having a single waste hauler for all of Oxford Township excluding the village of Oxford.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Nold and a second by Trustee Payne. Treasurer Ferrari?
I heard there's something from Priority here. Can we ask him some questions?
If you'd like to come up to the mic, like to ask some questions, ask him to me and he'll answer them.
With Priority now taken over the GFL accounts, will they be able to service us if the voters approve?
Good evening. Dan Vane with Priority Waste. A pleasure to be in front of you all tonight. I want to ask, make sure I understand that correctly. Are you talking prior to the single waste hauler contract? Or are you talking?
No, you've just acquired GFL. Would you still be able to service Oxford Township with all those other new customers?
Yes, so part of the acquisition that we have in place with GFL is the assets and employees as well as the subscription work in Oxford Township. So the, you know, starting, it's a target date closing of July 1 that we would take over. That date, I'm not saying that's set in stone because the paperwork has to be finalized, but the target date for that to be is July 1. The services that we're providing in the township would just be a growth with the GFL work that's currently in hand.
Trustee Nold?
Just a clarification, that's July 1 of 2025. Correct?
No, he's talking about their process.
No, he's talking about the GFL purchase.
Mine went there too.
Understand, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Supervisor.
It's the target date, like I said, it could shift if that happens.
Okay. Any other questions? Trustee Charles?
So asking the board of committee here, this bidding process was open to everybody, is that correct?
That's correct. Everyone was, it was across the board. Everybody was allowed to bid.
Everybody was?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Did you also do with that process? Was there anything stated that we'd go with a low bidder no matter what?
No, we said that low bid would not be the only consideration.
Okay. And in response to your committee note, this is also the procurement policy states you don't have to go with the low bidder.
That's correct.
Okay. This RFP was sent out for pricing to show the elector what you're going to get for the price, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But we, we had a lot of other criteria. And service, customer service was a very big part of it. And willingness to work with the townships, within the townships, RFP was a very big part of it.
Okay. Treasurer Ferrari?
I know there's a lot of devil in the details, like HOAs have their own companies. They'll just transition then over to Priority?
That's correct.
They probably continue with their current contract. Once that expires, they transition over.
That's correct.
This is all contingent of voters saying yes.
Yes.
If the voters say yes, they need to be aware of, no matter what happened. Go ahead, Trustee Charles.
Is there a plan in place to communicate this to the community?
Yes.
About the reasons why the committee is going through this process?
Yes.
Is there a plan in place to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. And you all know what happened when GFL told their employees that they were going to sell their assets for residential garbage to Priority?
No, I don't know what happened.
I can tell you what happened. Nobody got their garbage picked up in Oxford.
Oh, I heard about that.
For two to three weeks because GFL had single haulers in Rochester Hills, single hauler in Orion, and single hauler for 700,000 people that they had to meet contractually in order to not face fines. I got a call from Todd Stamper, you know him. I got a call from Brian Davis and Paul, I always screw this up, Tadonio?
Tadonio.
Tadonio, from other waste haulers saying, we can help. Curtis fielded hundreds of calls. I filled hundreds of calls where GFL walked away from the community and no one picked up our garbage.
Yeah.
It was two weeks in Orion. We are just getting our third week picked up in Oxford.
Rochester Hills is having the same problem.
Yes. So, you know, whether you have a single hauler or you have an independent, if you're not making money or you want to retire, or somebody comes with a lucrative buyout, you sell. It's a business. It's a business, no matter what your contract is. It's a very lucrative business if you do it right. If you're not making money as an independent, you go out for an IPO. All of a sudden, you get massive amounts of money and you can still go out of business. GFL had 700,000 residential customers that they're walking away from selling their company. Just as an independent who gets in age where they feel their retirement is ready, they can sell their 2,500 residential pickups. We found out the hard way that each individual had a contract with GFL. Priority couldn't come and pick my waste up unless I called them and filled in a contract with them. Community couldn't come and pick up somebody's garbage unless they canceled and filled in a contract with them. So allowing the electorate to choose whether or not there's a single hauler, in my opinion, is smart. But to your point, Margie, choosing the lowest bidder is not always the smartest. Treasurer Ferrari?
I agree with that completely because how many times in this community, we had roads in bad condition and we drove on them for years and years until the residents came to us and said, Township, we want to get this paved. We want to pay for it. Then we stepped in. Weed control, all those type of things. It's, it is dictated by our community. 51% of the voters in November say, you guys are going to be in the garbage business. We're in the garbage business. Yet then again, if 51% say no, we want individual choice. We're done.
I pay $115 for my garbage to get picked up. I'm going to pay $115 to Priority because they're going to assume the GFL residential contract. They're not going to come in at the single hauler rate. They're not going to come in at the rate they're charging my neighbor. They're going to assume the 115. If somebody said to me, I'll pick your garbage up for $80, yeah, pick it up.
Right.
I'm saving money.
No way.
35 bucks, a quarter. So the, the, this is a dirty business when it comes to us trying to serve our residents. Yes, Trustee Payne?
And I foresee changes ongoing. It's always been an ongoing situation with, with trash haulers, waste haulers. It'll always be a situation, this board will always be dealing with it. But by allowing one waste hauler in this community, that will solve a lot of the grief. So if one goes out of business and leaves everybody high and dry, then, you know, we can get someone in there. Like you can make the change in contract very quickly, hopefully. The other thing, you know, you talked about not taking the lowest bid. It just so happens that we did.
Yeah.
We are recommending the lowest bidder.
And I honestly don't know what that real bid is.
Okay.
I do not know. But what I did was talk to many independents that make some money and affordable living. You got to be at about $25 per household residential in a community of 22,000.
Really?
Yep. You know, your drivers today can go to Amazon and make $21 an hour and drive a pickup truck, a Corvair, whatever, a Corvette. And they can drop a package off at your house and make 21 bucks an hour.
Yep.
What do they pay your drivers?
It depends on the style of vehicle and their experience, but most of our drivers are in the 25-plus range or more.
Yep, so I don't have to drive an 8,000 series garbage truck through a residential area. I can make 21 bucks an hour. So a lot of things to be thinking about here that just got on my mind because I'm paying 115. I'm not going for price because for four years, I never had to make one call. I paid a premium, never one call, until GFL sent a letter to their employees saying they were sold. Everybody else is laughing, ha, ha. You know, you guys got GFL, we got community, we got Priority. I got Addison disposal. They all come down my street. Four of them. So that's my two cents. Anybody else? Clerk Wright?
Yeah, the, to go through the history of this, this committee's been in a lot of time to get to this point where we're at. We actually had to back up from last year and there's, there's been a lot of energy that we put in. We did a thorough review of the proposals we received and we sat down with Mr. Vane and his, his group. We sat down with GFL and their group. We do not sit down with waste management for the reasons of too many demands and trying to actually come to an agreement, in our opinion. So we're trying to put the best opportunity for the voters So, we're trying to put the best opportunity for the voters in front of them to say, "Do you want a single hauler, or do you not want a single hauler?" And this vote that the board's going to take is going to tell us whether or not that's going to happen.
Can we, Treasurer Ferrari?
The thing I like about this one is back in 1992, this was on the ballot before, but it was advisory vote. That's what angered our residents, because they could have said yes, the board could have said, "No, we're not doing it."
Right.
Or they could have said no, and the board could have said, "Hey, we're doing it anyway."
Right.
So this is different, because it binds us.
We also have a different culture in Oxford than we did in 1992.
A lot different.
Yep. So, I'm willing to pay $115 a quarter for my garbage, because I want it gone, I don't want anybody picking on me. What am I going to save by going to a single hauler? That's kind of the things that we need to tell the residents.
It will be in the ballot language, the price will be in the ballot language.
Okay.
And we have a five-year price schedule.
That's- Clerk Wright.
That is right now on the table, that's our proposal, but we probably need to finalize that, committee-wise and with the attorney, before we move forward with that, but that's the goal right now.
Yep.
So, right now, we have a vote that approves the language to go on the millage. And we've taken that vote, correct?
We have motion on the floor, we have not voted.
Okay, thank you. We voted on the language, we did not vote on choosing-
Priority.
-priority.
Correct.
What is this board's?
Oh, there's a motion in a second.
There's a motion in a second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Clerk Wright.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12C, American Rescue Plan, ARPA Funding Recommendation. Clerk Wright.
We reconvene as ARPA committee because of the kindness of Mr. Frank Bardi's kindness of donating $10,000 toward the Railroad Safety Path Project, it freed up another $10,000 of ARPA funds to be reallocated, and the ARPA committee is recommending to put those monies toward the cemetery repairs that are going on currently as we speak. So with that, I'll move to approve the reallocation of the American Rescue Plan Act Railroad Safety Path Project Funds, an amount of $10,000 to the Cemetery Maintenance Fund, and to approve the reallocation of any remaining American Rescue Plan Act legal fees to the Cemetery Maintenance Fund.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Clerk Wright, I have a second by trustee Charles. Any questions? Yes, Clerk Wright.
Just a comment, I didn't bring that up, but we have some excess legal fees as well, and that's why it's in this motion, so if they don't get expended on the projects, we'll have those already allocated, so we meet the deadline for the 2024 allocation.
Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles.
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item 12C, 2024 Gravelling of Additional Oxford Township's Road. Treasurer Ferrari.
Board members, I work with Supervisor Curtis, he'd had a couple residents call that wanted additional gravel roads, graveling on the roads, in addition to the ones we'd already approved. The county's going to try their best to get these done this year, but if not, it'll be the first thing on the docket in 2025. I make a motion, the Oxford Township Board of Trustees formally approves the 2024 Additional Gravel Road Program of Gardner Road and Delana Road, is outlined by RCO C's Colin Campbell, in a total amount of $85,689.24. This work cannot be done in 2024, and these gravel roads are to be addressed in 2025. These funds are to be expensed to the Roads Fund, account number 204-440-969-000.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Any questions?
Yeah. Do you have the money in the Road Fund?
It's going to be, right now, no, but it's going to be reallocated, because we're going to do budget amendments come July.
Okay.
We've got it earmarked.
So it's coming, going to go from the general fund to the roads?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
That is correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item 13A, New Business, MI Switch Business Phone System. Board members, in front of you tonight is the new contract from MI Switch. Our current phone provider is up for renewal, attached proposed contract renewing our agreement for another three years. MI Switch is a local company, and we don't have, we have not had any complaints in terms of service or customer support. This contract price is also discounted, almost $200 per month from 2024.
I move to approve the renewal agreement between MI Switch Communications and the Charter Township of Oxford, for duration of three years, the amount of $668.44 per month. This amount is to be expensed to account number 101-265-853.000 telephone. I further authorize Supervisor Jack Curtis to sign the agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, I have a second by trustee Noel. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item 13B, Set First Reading for Soil Erosion Ordinance 129.001. If we have any questions, we have a building official, Tim London, here tonight, who is our soil erosion expert and certified, all kinds of things on water and soil erosion.
I move to set a first reading of the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance 129.001, July 10, 2024, Oxford Township Board Trustees' Regular Meeting.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item 13C, Meals on Wheels Contract. Treasurer Ferrari.
Board members, we've been working with Love Inc., who has agreed to take on Meals on Wheels for us, as Rochester OPC is not going to be performing that service anymore. They'll be still be doing the meals part, but not the distribution. We're waiting on them to give the final insurance, we're almost there, we have a contract ready to go, and once they give us the final insurance coverage, Supervisor Curtis will sign that, and the Director of Love Inc. will sign that. I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Love Inc. of North Oakland County and Charter Township of Oxford, for the purpose of providing Meals on Wheels services to Oxford Township residents, conditioned upon Love Inc. providing evidence of adequate insurance coverage as required under the MOU, or if authorized, the township supervisor execute the same. These funds are to be expensed to 101-995-965.865.
Not to exceed?
It's in the contract, it says 15,000.
Thank you. That's part of the motion?
It says to approve the contract, let me see. Yes, because this approves this contract too, right, Brittany? Okay, this approves this? Okay.
I have a second, I'll second it. Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Supervisor Curtis. Any questions? Joe, thanks for all your work on this.
You're welcome.
We came, an employee came to us and said they were being fired, and then Rochester OPC came to us and said, "We are no longer going to deliver your food to the Meals on Wheels program. You can have the food, but we have nobody to deliver it." Joe stepped in, got with Love Inc., and worked this contract out to provide that service to the residents requiring Meals on Wheels. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item 14, nothing was removed. Item 15, General Comments from the Public. Any comments you'd like to make, please step up to the mic, and we got three people, okay? Item number one.
I'm Paul Tadonio, President of the Community and Public. I was glad to hear your comments earlier. I thank the board for, I like the way you did it, putting it out for the people, because I plan to use the intervening time to try and dazzle my customers and get as many more as I can. In the last few weeks, with GFL falling down, we've already picked up several hundred, I picked up actually about 1,600, but not all of them in Oxford. So, wasn't a bad week for me. That being said, I am pushing my boundaries, I was trying to keep my routes pretty tight now, car to town. We moved across 24 a few months ago, and now, other than the stuff that's just the dead ends of roads that are in Lake Orion, I'm open for taking on customers. So, and our rates are 20 bucks for garbage, 7 bucks for recycling, and we do yard waste for 50 cents a bag, so, and that's what we'll be selling at if anybody calls us in the new areas. And if they approach us with subdivision, you know, we may get better deals than that if they have an HOA or something like that. I do have probably over 20, probably 25 HOAs in Oxford Township right now, that all have probably better deals than that. But, we will be here, we're going to be trying to impress, hoping that the people will, to keep us. Some people will pay more for what they perceive to be good service, and we're here to provide good service. We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Young lady in the back.
My name's Michelle Calver, and I just had some questions about the waste hauler proposed language. I know you mentioned that it wouldn't be clear, may clear to residents that what pricing Priority would be offering as part of the ballot language, is that my understanding? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well-
You're not at liberty to share that today with this group?
I don't know. We can't. Clerk Wright. We could take those into consideration and answer during board comments.
Oh, we're not allowed to answer.
That's right.
Okay. And as part of the committee research, were there any community focus groups held, like we've talked about at previous meetings?
Was there?
Any community focus groups held, like we've talked about at previous meetings?
I'll ask, address that. Anything else?
What was the answer?
He can't answer.
He can't answer that?
But he may later.
Okay. Okay. And then, relative to the next steps on this, then, is it correct to say that in July, there will be ballot language proposed at a meeting like this, that this board will vote on without public comment?
Okay.
Without any further public discussion between now and then, I guess?
Correct. Correct, I got the question.
Okay. And I guess that's it for now, but the last question is really about the validity of the process, as it relates to the fact that GFL was going out of business at the same time Priority was taking over, or is, you know, purchasing their business, and you've brought one hauler to the table here, because obviously we can't have GFL today, and Waste Management's out of the picture for some reason. So, it just seems a little bit of a strange time to put forth this sort of thing with Priority being in flux with this takeover of GFL. So I guess I just wanted to stick that for the record. It's very strange timing to put something like this forward, not knowing how Priority is going to be.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Dave Baker, I'm with Lakes of Indian Hills Subdivision on the Board of Directors, and I just wanted to clarify a question, I have no issue with the recommendations you made or anything, except as I report back to some of our residents, they've had a keen interest in the single waste hauler. Just wanted to confirm, did community receive an RFP?
We didn't.
You did. Okay, that's all, why don't we go? Thank you.
Any other members of the community want to speak, make comment? I'll give you a do-over, Paul, you didn't use all your three minutes.
The woman brought up, GFL's not going out of business, they're just getting rid of underperforming work. They get a whole lot of very poorly priced, missful work that a company called Rizzo got years ago, most of it was old Rizzo work. And he was trying to go public and sell it to GFL, well, they were trying to go public, and everybody just wanted to dazzle investors with big, throw in big numbers, and nobody saw the profit. Now GFL's a public corporation, people see their numbers, and they suck, and that's why they're getting rid of some really crap work. I don't know if they're paying for it, but they're paying, paying to take it.
It's that bad.
In my eyes, I've been in this 45 years, I don't get it, but anyways, and they're getting a bunch of equipment that's, you know, they've always had new equipment, they're going to have their hands full trying to maintain a bunch of old crap.
Thanks, Paul.
Anyways, thank you.
Appreciate your comment. Any other public comment? Seeing none, board of trustees comments. Cath, trustee Colvin.
Nothing at this time.
Trustee Payne.
Nothing.
Trustee Noel.
I have a question for the board, a question for the supervisor. There's been some questions brought up during public comment.
I'm going to ask during my comment to have a member of the single hauler answer those questions, so-
Thank you.
I wrote them down.
Thank you for the comment.
Okay. Treasurer Ferrari.
I think, because where I'm at at Home Town Village, we have community, you know, and to me, garbage is garbage, they've done a fine job, but I just wish they would have chosen to bid on it. And I understand it's a business decision, I get it, but I wish I would have had that option as a member, if you'd at least consider it. Like, Palmer, I could even say no to you. As I go in a football game with no gear on, you can't go on the field, you don't have any gear on. You know, if you at least would have did a proposal, I could have said to my committee, "Okay, guys, what was wrong with community's bid?" I can't do that, nothing to submit it.
Any other comments?
That's all I have.
Okay. Clerk Wright.
No comments at this time.
And trustee Charles.
Nope.
Okay, for the board, for the members of the single hauler community, we had a question of rates in the ballot, will the rate be in the ballot? Would a member elect to answer that question? Clerk Wright. Trustee Noel.
Not only will the rates be in the ballot for the current year, but the projected five-year program will be in the ballot, so the voter will have monthly cost for the first year, monthly cost second year, monthly cost third, fourth, and fifth year.
Okay. Committee members, number two, the second question asked of this committee, community in the process. I wrote that down pretty quickly. Was community involved? Was the community-
I thought she meant community.
The community, outside people in our community involved in this process? Yes, Clerk Wright.
Yeah, the meetings that we had were posted meetings, committee meetings, so anybody is welcome to attend that. Technically, a committee does not have to post agendas for a meeting, so we followed the rules as if it was a board meeting, we called the meeting to order, we took minutes, we recorded minutes, who was present, and any recommendations or anything, anything like that, like what you saw tonight was, was proposed to the Township Board in a meeting open to the public. Also backing up to the rates itself, as a committee member, we are seeing that those are going to be in the ballot language, but I would caution this board and the public that we still have to go through the ballot language with the Attorney Council to make sure that that's the decision that we want to do as a board.
Okay. Number three, the July language is final? At the July meeting, we'll be voting on the final language for the ballot?
That's the goal, yes. And if that is a goal, it has to be, as we stated earlier in the meeting, the proposal has to be down at the county at the end of July with the language to the county on August 13.
Okay. Number four, the validity of the process. You know, I'm not going to check anybody's validity or integrity on that committee. There's no one here that had even a lunch bought by one of the haulers that bid on this committee message. Not one ounce of impropriety was done while this committee did work, and I'll stand in front of any one of these committee members and tell them all that they did this with integrity and sharpness and no malice whatsoever. Number five, one choice. The one choice, the question is, will there be one choice? I think the single hauler calls it out as you will be a single hauler in the community. There will not be one here, one here, one here, it will be a single hauler. Hopefully, that answered all your questions. Item number 16. Number 17. Adjournment.